Well, thanks, Steve, and I'm glad to be here with Sue this morning and put some of what's happening in perspective. The legislature's got to adjourn with a budget completely out of balance with a number of key issues that I think are very important still on the table. And so it's pretty much in disarray, and we've had, I think, five special sessions right now. I've never known of a governor that crammed so much effort into trying to solve so many problems and not getting very far so far. So anyway, that's the scenario of where we are right now, a special session coming up on the 18th, just two days away after they shut down here as we speak. And Sue, I'm very anxious to hear your perspective of where the legislature is right now. People are very confused. The average citizen out there doesn't have the foggiest idea what's happening at the state Capitol. And you being a close observer, we'd like to hear just what your views are in terms of where we are right now and what you think will happen in the next couple of weeks.
Realistically, there are days when I'm not quite sure where everything is. It has been quite a dysfunctional group of lawmakers there in, here in Baton Rouge, dealing with issues that seem simple. I mean, the bottom line is, they voted for, two and a half years ago, they voted for temporary taxes, knowing they were going to be falling off, knowing they had a fiscal session last year when they could fix it. There were promises made that they were going to revise our tax code and do things more fairly. That didn't come to fruition because of partisan gamesmanship more than anything else. What we heard from the beginning of this administration was that we now had an independent House, as witnessed by the choosing of Taylor Barra as the Speaker, a Republican, even though the governor had wanted Walt Lejeune to be the Speaker. But independent is not exactly what I would call them. I would have to call them partisan. And that partisanship has dominated everything that's gone on for the last two and a half years, making things that would be sensible, like extending the temporary taxes, which they could have done in the special session in February, not happen at all. Instead, that special session ended with no revenue raisers coming from the House to the Senate, and the Senate sitting there with their thumbs up there, you-know-what for the whole two and a half weeks. The Senate's tired of it. That is what we saw last week with the Senate Finance Committee and yesterday with the full Senate in the version of the budget they sent out, in the version of the Senate Concurrent Resolution 101 authored by Jack Donahue, a Republican, a very conservative Republican, saying that they had a list of potential revenue raisers that they effectively would like to see in this next special session. Now, they don't convene until next Tuesday at 4:00, Jim. So they're going to have a few days to go home, relax, reset the button as much as they can reset, and we'll see what happens. But I don't think anyone has a lot of confidence that even at this point, they're going to be able to come together enough to raise the revenue needed to fill the $650 million hole in the budget, just to keep us even with what we are at right now.
Well, Sue, could I follow that up with this? You, I think, articulately summed up the internal workings of the legislature itself. The person you didn't mention was Governor John Bell Edwards. I wish you'd comment on that. I know I was a state senator, and when I was there, and there were budget crises in the late part of the time I was senator, the governor was a, not just a major significant player, but the guiding force as to what happened. And if he got out of line, the governor has huge control over the budgets. He can tell the legislator, you're not getting a thing in your district, we're going to completely cut you out, we're going to isolate you, and you can play real hardball if you're the governor and make legislators kind of think secondarily about it. What do you see down there? Is the governor playing hardball? Is he just throwing things out? You don't see him in the forefront of the debate. He's saying, oh, we've got to have more money, but as far as behind the scenes, really twisting arms, really trying to build a consensus. What's your view of what the governor is doing or is not doing?
Well, there's two factors here. Based on the time that you were in the legislature, Jim, there was more available money, the capital outlay process was a bit different than it is now, and there were projects for the districts that the governors could go ahead and cut out or keep in, bump up the amounts or reduce the amounts. That no longer really exists in the budget as it is today because, over the eight years of the previous administration, a lot of the money for things like that were put to other things. It's that discussion between one-time money and recurring revenue. The previous governor took an awful lot of sources of one-time money and plugged holes in recurring revenue with them. The other factor with this governor is he's the first governor in the history of Louisiana to move straight from the House to the governor's mansion. John Bell Edwards has, and I've always phrased it as, a reverence for the separation of powers, a reverence for the legislature. And because of that, the things that one would expect of somebody who went to West Point, who was 82nd Airborne, to put on his drill sergeant boots and jump in the middle of everything, he doesn't do because he is an absolutist when it comes to the separation of powers. Personally, I think there's more he could do to move things along, to try and motivate certain members of the House to move more toward the center, but he has held this hands-off approach for so long that a lot of House members, especially those that are in leadership positions, kind of see him as not necessarily strong, but a pushover that they can snooker him, and that's the way it has looked. I don't think he's being snookered at all. I just think he hasn't gotten to that point yet where he's ready to tell them, put up or shut up. All of us are waiting for it, and I'm hoping that either he will, or the members of the House who are fed up with it will.
Okay, so, go ahead.
All I was saying was, it's what we saw from the Senate. They said, over the past few days, enough is enough.
So let me jump in and say, and always ask this question, and that is, could it be that, you know, there aren't projects, like you said, that he can use a strong arm about, because we don't have the money? But something else is true, and that is, what, about three years ago, when he first became governor, the House wanted its independence. And so as a result, he doesn't have the kind of control over the House, over the seats, that, say, Bobby Jindal had, that all other governors had. And so consequently, if he doesn't have control over the seats, if he doesn't have the committees, then, I mean, basically, he's being defamed.
In many ways, yes. I mean, the reality is that Cameron Henry wanted to be House Speaker and found out shortly before the inauguration that he didn't have the vote, that he had ticked just a few too many people off. And so they came up with Taylor Barra as someone who is inoffensive, who didn't have a, he didn't have a lot of bills to his credit that were controversial in any way. He was just a nice man that they could put in power and that the marionette strings could be controlled by Cameron, could be controlled by the Republicans, and nobody would try to get rid of him because he was a nice guy. And that's kind of where we stand right now. We have de facto speakers, Cameron, who stays very much behind the scenes, except when it comes to appropriations, Lance Harris, who is the upfront face of it, and who is generally considered to be the enforcer of the Republican Party of the House by members both Black, White, Democrat, and Republican.
Go ahead, Jim.
Well, I'd like to go back to, if you can, to Edwards, though, that we are either concluding that he's a real weak sister who doesn't have the ability to govern and is probably, if that's the case, a one-termer, or should he be exerting himself a little bit more? I think you've summed it up very well, Sue, in terms of the perspective. I mean, the governor, I know there's been some limitations, but the governor still has great deal of control over a number of state agencies that deal in all these districts. He's got huge appointment of power, where he appoints key people living in Senate and Representative districts who those legislators want to be appointed. There's still a great deal of power there that the governor has not exercised, number one. And Sue, number two, I want to always think about this, what about the governor's outreach? Has he gotten out around the state and built a consensus? One, what you get to legislators is to, in effect, go over their heads, the old Ronald Reagan scenario, and to some degree, Donald Trump. Donald Trump has pretty much gone over the heads of legislators, and we've seen some governors in the past, Edwin Edwards is the very best there was, at going over the heads of legislators and building consensus around the state. Do you see much activity on the part of the governor, getting out and telling people in Monroe and Homa and Lake Charles that, look, I need you to get a hold of those legislators and put some pressure on them. I'm fighting the good fight, and I'm not getting help. Do you see him doing that, or is that another weakness in terms of his armor?
No, I actually see him doing that, but what we've had over the last, I would say, 12, 13, possibly as long as 14 years, is a move of the business community more to the Republican line of thinking because the Republican Party was more conducive to their preferred policies. And because of that, it, you know, when the previous governor Edwards was governor, this was mostly a Democrat state, Democratic state, almost everybody was registered as Democrat. There were a few Republicans, but they had no real clout. It has switched to a more balanced, if you will, political partisanship. There are still more registered Democrats than there are Republicans, and independents, other as they're registered, are moving up so that it's fairly close to a third, the third, and a third, where Governor Edwards has to sway people are those independents who aren't willing to be aligned with some of the harsher policies of the Republican Party, who aren't willing to be completely aligned with some of the more liberal policies of the Democratic Party, who can be switched. The other group that he can appeal to, and I've noticed this is a lack in every candidate, not just Governor Edwards, but every candidate for every office, is appealing to the women. We have never felt like women were a stable enough voting bloc. Yet, they're 54% of the registered voters in Louisiana, and if you can find a way to message to the women that you are on their side and fighting for them, and to communicate with them effectively, because there's two different forms of communication. Men communicate with each other a certain way, straight line. Women communicate with each other more holistically. If you can find a way to communicate to the women that you are their candidate, you have an untapped voting bloc that can do a lot. A lot of times, we assume that wives vote as their husbands tell them to here in this state. But the voting booth is still very private, and which buttons they push can't be seen by their husbands. That is often their one streak of independence is how they actually vote. And it's one of those things that I think has been sorely lacking in the political discussions and the political campaign that we've seen run here in Louisiana. Nobody is tapping into that voting bloc, and that is where Governor Edwards has tried to make inroads with his advocacy for equal pay, his advocacy for raising minimum wage. It's not getting the traction in the legislature, so the option is to vote those lawmakers out that aren't playing that game. And it's a bigger picture than just Governor John Bell Edwards versus the Republican-controlled legislature at this point.
So let me, you know, Jim actually pointed something out in terms of strong-arming, I think it's a word that you used, Jim. So what we actually did see, what we actually did see was, I think, some strong-arming last week. We saw letters going out, and those letters were, the Republicans say they were scare letters, that they didn't have to go out at the time that they went out, that even the next day after they went out, the Senate came up and rejected what the House had put together. Would that be the kind of strong-arming that maybe a governor would do? And secondly, was it, I mean, do you think it was fair for the governor to do that?
I absolutely think it was fair. I think it was indeed the appropriate action to take at the time. You don't see the same kind of criticism heaped on University Health Center in Lafayette for having to send out the warn notices to their 800 employees that the potential existed for them to lose their jobs the end of June. This was required by federal law because, based on the budget as it sat in the Senate awaiting the decisions and actions of the Senate, which are not final, by the way.
Sure.
Because just because the Senate has taken the money and shoveled it into healthcare and defunded almost every State Department by 24.2%, doesn't mean that that's the final version. The House hasn't concurred on it. What the Senate did did not fix the budget. It was just a different view of the budget than what the House had sent over, and they have not concurred on it. The House hasn't even taken up those changes yet, which they are supposed to today, and we'll hear finally from House leadership where they stand on what the Senate has done and find out whether they're going to even throw it to conference committee and try to work out some kind of agreement, or whether they're going to leave it with two different versions and not pass a budget at all this session. I mean, the House has been adamant about they needed to know how much was lacking before they would consider raising any revenue. And yet, there, if they don't establish a final budget between now and Friday, they don't really have that number. It's just obfuscation by the House, much like the criticism of the notices going out. I mean, realistically, if there is a chance that you are losing your eligibility for the care that keeps you in a nursing home, the long-term care program, they are reducing, under the House version of the budget, they are reducing the eligibility from being able to have income of $2,250 a month down to only being allowed to have income of $750 a month, which the 750 is the maximum you can get on Social Security, SSI, okay, on SSI, not Social Security disability. And so that means a lot of people who are elderly, who have full Social Security, which is not enough by itself to pay the cost of their monthly care at the nursing home, are going to be out of luck because they earn too much to remain there. So the notices said, you may be losing eligibility. We are looking to see if you qualify for any other programs. We will keep you informed. That kind of notification is required by federal law.
Just to follow up on that, because, you know, we did an interview with John Kay, and his argument, and his argument was that the legal requirement didn't mandate that the letters go out at this particular point in time, that there is a period of time where the CMS, the federal government, will decide as to, you know, really what the state can do on this issue, and that why send it out now? Why not just wait until, you know, really crunch time? That's just scaring. And of course, this is what the Republicans have been saying. My response to him was, well, you know, is ever a right time, a good time? And secondly, don't seniors have a right to be able to lobby, you know, so that they have more certainty? So, and I just threw it out in terms of playing devil's advocate, but I want to, you know, get your response to the conversation, if you would.
Well, they're required to send out the notices 60 days in advance. Those notices were sent out May 10th. With the budget ending, the current budget ending, and the guaranteed funds that we have ending June 30th, that's only 50 days. Okay?
Okay.
So 10 days into the new budget year, when we don't have money, because right now, we don't have a budget at all, but when we don't have money and we're anticipating that based on the actions taken to date, it's going to be less than needed to fund these programs, you know, this argument about, well, you have to wait for CMS and all of that, but who's going to pay the bills in the meantime if the state doesn't have the money?
So what their argument is, is that you cut employees from DHS. I mean, I'm throwing it out, that's, I think, what the counterargument is.
Right, but there are, the employees that DHS has are ones that are employed through the public-private partnership hospitals. You have to remember that administering all the Medicaid programs are not being done necessarily through state workers in DHS, that they're being done through contracts with the managed care organizations and through their clerical staff. So it isn't like you can cut two clerks here to save enough money to keep grandma in the nursing home, because they don't have the clerk.
Jim?
Well, I think all of this points out what I said initially, that the governor needs to play more hardball, and I think he did with the letter. Maybe the letter could have gone out next week, or, you know, it could have been delayed, but it is a crisis, and those who are affected need a little planning time. The families need planning time, and it's good, it's good politics for the governor to get the letter out there, and whether it's interpreted as scare tactics on the part of Republicans, that's something the governor can do. If I were him, I'd have done the very same thing and also notified other groups that these kinds of crises are happening and that we're going to have to do some shutdowns. So I see nothing wrong with what he did, and again, we're in this dance that my only thing I go back to saying is that we just shouldn't be here. We're here year after year after year. Maybe it's just a, and I've talked to a number of more moderate Republican legislators, they don't, they're not, there is a certain group that's lying in the bushes saying, we're going to oppose the governor no matter what he does. The old Mitch McConnell line, first thing he said after Barack Obama was inaugurated is, we're going to spend the next four years trying to beat Barack Obama. There are certain legislators that take that same approach, Steve, as Sue, but there's still some modern folks that are reasonable, that I think could be built on as a consensus. So some, I've talked to several legislators who say that they did not, have never really heard from the governor, that he's lobbying people, there's no communication earlier in the year, going back into February and March. Communication, everybody likes a little attention, so hopefully there's some lessons learned from this crisis, because it seems like every year we're right back into it again. And I just think that the executive could be doing more. Maybe he doesn't have the ability to cut out certain projects, but there's still a great deal of authority there. We still have one of the stronger governors in the state and the country, and I think the governor's got to make a decision. Look, if he's got any chance of being re-elected, he's going to assert that power a lot more than has been done in the past.
Okay, so we're coming to the end of our show. Jim, do you have a question to ask?
Well, no, Sue, okay, put on your prognosticator hat. Where are we going to be 30 days from now? Is it all going to be hunky-dory? The budget's back up? No real crises at hand? Will this problem get solved? Are there bright minds to do that? What do you think, Sue?
I think that there is a potential for us to actually be in yet another second session, another special session, excuse me, 30 days from now, because I am not yet convinced that the House leadership is going to step up and actually pass the revenue raisers over to the Senate. It's difficult to say. I know that there has been consistently since last year some talk about replacing the Speaker, which is the one clear path that is available to changing committee chairmanships, changing committee compositions, and making sure that some of these bills that will take care of the problem get over to the Senate so that they can be voted on by the Senate. Truthfully, I see that as the only available avenue, and whether the governor is willing to open that can of worms or not remains to be seen. I know that many of his advisors have suggested to him that that is the only available path, but how do you make that happen when there's so much turnover in the House? Because we've seen phenomenal turnover. It was just announced yesterday that Representative Jean Reynolds of Minden, who had previously been the head of the Democratic Caucus in the House, which is now Robert Johnson of Marksville, was leaving the legislature at the end of this upcoming special session. There have, a lot of the moderate Republicans have basically given up and have basically given up and left the legislature. And what you're getting voted in are those that are a little bit more rabid toward the conservative side. Are there enough moderate Republicans who are fed up with the status quo, plus the Democrats, that they can come together and force a vote for the Speaker, force a no-confidence vote on the Speaker? Probably there are, with a few to spare. However, you have to get them all to show up. And the one thing we have seen over the last three weeks since the House actually advanced the budget over to the Senate, actually, it's been about a month, is that there are generally 10 or more House members that don't even show up for the floor every day. So that makes it really hard to hit that 53 button of 105 members of the House when you only have 90 to 95 or less showing up to vote.
Sure. So let me, let me just follow up and, and then we'll call it the day. And thank you very much. Really do appreciate it. Very insightful. I would, I would argue that the conservatives, and particularly in the House, are being told by their voters back home, do not raise a penny. We don't want any revenue raisers. We don't want any taxes. Zero. You do, you raise a penny, you raise a fraction of a penny, and you're fired. So, yeah.
Stephen, that they're not actually raising, they're getting a cut. A penny is dropping off June 30th.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Even if they renew a half penny, they're still getting, on average, a $400 million cut in their taxes across the whole state for the next year, or however long the legislature chooses to leave it in place. So that is a null argument.
Well, but, but, but the, the penny was temporary. And what I'm doing is, I'm playing devil's advocate here. I'm trying, I'm trying to, to at least present both sides. And the penny was temporary, they would argue. And so, you know, we thought that this, you know, we hoped and thought that this problem would be over. It's not. And so we're just not going to play this game anymore. We're being told by our voters, enough is enough. You know, that's, that's, that's the argument.
Which, which voters are telling them that? Is it all the voters? Because the surveys, like the LSU survey, show that folks want to see the crisis resolved, that they're tired of it. Who is telling these lawmakers? Is it their voting base? Is it their constituency? Or is it their contributor base?
Okay.
And that means that the money is controlling them.
Well, listen, in terms of Bernie Pinsonet's poll that came out, I'm talking one, the one that I know of, in December, I think it was, you know, even the Democrats didn't want an increase in tax. But the question wasn't asked, okay, what are you willing to give up? Okay?
But the LSU survey did ask.
Okay.
Did ask. And it showed, it showed that approximately, if I'm remembering right, because they issued a whole series of the surveys, but I believe it showed that about 68%, 68% of the voters around state, based on their sample, want to see the situation resolved and are willing to pay a little bit more. Though in this case, it appears that they will be paying less because of the penny falling off. And what we're talking about is renewal of a portion. We're not talking about a whole new penny. That's one of the fallacies with the report that just came out from, from the Pelican Institute, was it started from a base of five cents sales tax and added a portion of a penny onto that. They didn't subtract the penny first and then re-add when they did their calculations. And they were using 2009 income numbers.
Gotcha.